Okay, welcome everyone. We just came out of executive session as we discussed the employment history of a particular individual where no action was taken. So, we're going to move into our regular meeting at this time. I'd like to open up the scheduled public hearing at this time and Ms. Dineo will provide explanation.
Okay, thank you. Just to give a brief summary, there's a detailed report available that, you know, I will describe and if you want all of the details, you are welcome to get a copy of that report. At the beginning of the school year, I was informed of, this doesn't sound right, is that all right? The beginning of the school year, I was informed of suspected mold growth in the bandroom closet and in the elementary school library closet. So, I immediately contacted BOSI's for guidance and they had me contract with Lewis Berger Company to conduct a mold assessment. I just want to point out that it was urgent to call because it was right on the heels of all of the issues that the schools were having over the summer with mold blooms from the high humidity. This is not that type of mold growth. This is mold growth that's related to wet sheet rock. If you're familiar with, you know, it gets wet, mold could grow, but it's not something that is airborne and is, you know, taking root in fabrics and that's what the problems were over the summer. So, they sent an engineer immediately and they tested the two areas. They did discover a third area which I'll describe. The first was in the bandroom closet. There are three types of degrees that they test for. It's dry, at risk, or wet. The bandroom closet was at risk because it was damp, so that was not an urgent situation. The elementary school library closet was considered wet. We immediately covered it in plastic so that nothing could bump up against it and cause anything to be expelled. That is from the leak in the boys' bathroom on the other side of the wall and there were three areas that that leak has affected. It's the elementary library closet, the hallway by the elevator, and the boys' bathroom. Now, we know that the elementary boys' bathroom is being renovated with the capital project that we have. It's up at the State Ed Department for review, but because it's considered a wet area, it needs to be taken care of before our project.
The library closet.
The library closet, yes. And we need to make sure that the leak is repaired even though it's going to be probably addressed again during the project. We need to get the leak fixed and we need to remediate the wet sheet rock that's there. The third area that was discovered on the second floor, janitor's closet, it was around the sink because it overflowed. It created the sheet rock to get wet and that was another area that had to be covered with plastic because it was continually wet. So, the testing reports were immediately done and we have a remediation and reconstruction plan. All of the costs together, the testing, the remediation, the rebuilding, and then the retesting to make sure that it's clear of all mold totals, the estimate is $25,800. I feel that that would really impact our budget for operations and maintenance negatively. It's really, you know, the first part of the school year. We don't know what's going to happen the rest, so I'd like to recommend that we use funds from the repair reserve for such a large expenditure. I would suggest an amount up to $30,000 to cover if there's any unforeseen expenses and unused funds could be returned to the repair reserve after the project is completed. So, if we're able to release those funds, we could have the work done over the December holiday recess.
Repair reserves is about $90,000?
That's correct.
And if you could just talk at this point, since we're in the public hearing, this is also an opportunity for any members of the public to ask questions, is that correct?
That's correct.
As well as members of the board. And then if there are none, this item is on for action with respect to the movement of the funds later on in this agenda.
Yes, that's correct.
And I remember us talking about the State Ed Department pushing through approval of plans if there was an emergency and we all said, well, although we may personally think the bathrooms are an emergency, they're not really. They don't really qualify. But do, you know, now that we have sort of another situation caused by the bathrooms, would that in any way help us at State Ed to like push our project along for approval, do you think? Am I grasping?
No, it's a good question. It would not be as fast as they would like it to be done in December. We're really on course to having our project done over the summer and even if the project was sped up, we would lose bathrooms during the school year.
No, I understand that we can't physically do the project till the summer. I just thought that would it, you know, help us like make sure that we have the approvals in a timely fashion so that it's not, you know, June and we still haven't received the approvals yet and then all of a sudden we can't do it over the summer and our hands are tied again? I don't know. Is it, I guess I'm just asking, is it worth it at all to reach out and say, hey, it's kind of an emergency now?
It's a good thought.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, I don't want to dismiss it as no, but we would still, the best time to get this done is over the December break so that the wet areas could be remediated. We can get that rebuilt and we can get it tested and cleared so that, you know, and it's a small area. It would be contained, but in a very, it's just a small, they would just be putting up, you know, curtains. It's not like an encapsulation like an asbestos abatement.
But I guess to your point, if we do that, we spend the $25,000, we get the okay that, okay, it's all fixed over break, and then it happens again before we get to start the bathroom, how many times are we going to do it?
I think a lot of what happened with these areas, particularly here, has nothing to do with the bathroom, the bandroom, has nothing to do with the bathroom. The upstairs, girls' bathroom, second floor, had nothing to do with the bathroom. It was just an overflow that was there since last year, I think, and finally got attention when it molded.
So, the cost is the testing, the remediation, which includes fixing of the piping?
Correct.
All right, yep, and then testing after the fact.
Correct, and air scrubbing.
Okay, and there, you don't feel there's any risk of our project being, the greater bathroom project being delayed for any reason? We're on track and we're on time?
We're, it's in the final approval right now at State Ed is what I was last told.
Just a quick question, and I don't know if this would help us at all. I mean, obviously, the project needs to be done. We need to remediate the mold. Was there a breakdown of the areas? The cost for the areas broken down or they just did a, it was just more like a one lump sum?
I don't have the, I don't have that right in front of me. I wonder, Nabil, do you remember if the cost for the three different areas for the mold and the water damage, was that broken down or did they just give one?
It's itemized. We've got the reconstruction.
That cost estimate, Ann, is itemized. We have the remediation, the reconstruction, and the air monitoring and clearance.
I don't know if it's broken down in the three sections. Thank you, Nabil. I don't know if it's broken down in the three sections, but I do know that, well, I know how much, you know, the air testing was because we already paid for that. But I'd like to reimburse the general fund if this is approved because it's quite costly.
And just from, so we're remediating all three, the too wet and the one that's at risk?
Correct.
Okay, cool. So, the wet in the library closet requires piping replacement. The wet in the janitor closet was overflow, so that's just the drywall remediation. And the other one, it's just because there's no airflow through the bandroom closet?
Right, well, that was from an old leak as well, but it's, it's not happening at this time. It's not recurring, but it's still damage that should be repaired.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, at this time, I'd like to declare the public hearing closed. We'll move on with our regular meeting. Just a reminder that the upcoming meeting is Tuesday, December 4th, 7:00 PM here in the bandroom. That will be a business meeting. Dr. Bernante?
Okay, just welcome everyone and before I forget, because I will forget because we're going to give a budget presentation tonight, so my mind's going to shift to budget. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and all of our families a happy Thanksgiving. I hope everyone gets to take some time off and enjoy peaceful Thanksgiving with their Tough weather-related events recently, so I think we definitely got the call right on Friday. I was worried Thursday, sending the kids home early, that I was going, you know, every superintendent inevitably gets a nickname when it comes to calling weather-related events and I thought my nickname's going to be No Flake Phil, right? Because no snowflakes fell from the sky by the time 3:00 rolled around, but it certainly got bad after that, so I'm glad everyone got home safely and hopefully we won't have any weather-related events and a need to delay or cancel school anytime soon, get that out of the way. A reminder for the board that at our next meeting, Nabil is going to bring the board around for a walkthrough and that'll start at 6:00 PM. And I'll communicate to you a starting location. Nabil and I will work on that. There will also likely be a need for an executive session at our next meeting as well, so we probably will have to do the exec after the regular board meeting, so I just for planning purposes want to make sure that everyone has that on their calendar and we look forward to spending some time with Nabil before the meeting. And finally, I would like to just congratulate our boys' football team. Their season ended yesterday. They had a great season. They lost in the regional final. They were state semifinalists, had the chance to go to the game. Tough game, six, nothing loss. It's more like a baseball score than a football score, but the boys had a great season. Coach McConville did a great job with the team this year. They lost their first game of the season, which many of us were at, and I thought, ah, it might be a tough football season. They rolled off seven consecutive wins and obviously lost their last game, but they had a great season. I want to send my congratulations to the team. I'm very much looking forward to the play in a couple of weeks and I know Andrew and some of our, Ms. Sniffen may mention the play as well, so I won't speak too much about that, but I've had the chance to watch the kids rehearse a couple of times as we're going out of our board meetings and it's really an incredible experience that they have. And actually Damian had, who helps out with the production behind the scenes, was sharing some information that he put together for kids who may be interested in working on the play but don't want to necessarily be on stage, about what goes on behind the scenes. And you realize that 90% of the show is what's going on backstage, underneath the stage, above the stage. It's really impressive work, so we look forward to seeing it all in a few weeks. Romeo and Juliet will be the seventh and the eighth, if I'm not mistaken, here in our auditorium. That concludes my remarks for now. I think we're going to transition to our finance and budgeting overview.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I can squeeze on the end of the table, Andrew, I can share a mic.
Sure.
You can actually have mine.
Oh, you can have yours.
Oh, whoops.
Thanks.
So, as this is loading up, as we get ready for the budgeting process, the first part of this is just providing an overview of the timeline for our Board of Education. That's what Ann and I will seek to do this evening. You'll find that Ann will do the majority of the explanations here for the process, but we want to make sure our community is really well-informed. We provide you with an overview of key dates through the budgeting process this year, some perspective on what's going on behind the scenes, and we will need a few, you just sit with a few things tonight in preparation for our meeting on December 4th. And if I counted correctly, this will be the first of 10 budget presentations to the Board of Education through the school year, so we'll be coming back to this quite a bit. So, Ann, if you want to start with budget parameters. So, last year, parameters from the board are probably one of the most important things we will sit with starting out because it really sets the tone for what the administration's working with and what your expectations are for the administration as we work with the development of a budget process and bring back a recommended budget to the Board of Education. So, these were the budget parameters established last school year. So, staying within the tax cap, reducing appropriated fund balance amount, funding any depleted reserves without impacting program, staff development in relation to our strategic plan, and keeping pace with technology. So, I wasn't here last year, so this is what we, you know, certainly our historical artifacts indicate were some of the parameters for last school year. And what we're really looking to do and what we're looking from for the board, or from the board, excuse me, for this year is what the parameters are for this year's budget development process. And we'd like to have your blessing, if you will, on those parameters at our next meeting because that puts Ann and myself and our administrative team in a good position to know what we're working with and what the board is really asking us to honor through that process. So, if you can give me one more click forward there.
I know. It's a... I was hitting the right button.
So, at minimum, I would expect this, just looking at where we've been in the past and probably where we would like to go in the future. We've defined our goals and objectives for this school year. Those are derived from the strategic plan and I'm imagining that the Board of Education is still going to want the administration to work from the strategic plan as a starting point in the budget development process. Second, obviously, by law, we have to stay within the tax cap, but I am looking for your permission to develop an administrative proposal that goes up to the levy limit. I think it's important to be really explicit about that. I know last year, it says stay within the tax cap, but we could have been a percent below the tax cap. I'm looking for your blessing in developing a proposal that goes actually up to the limit without exceeding it. So, there's no surprises when I come in. It's always, I don't want to take that for granted, that as we're developing a budget that the board has given us permission to do so all the way up to that levy limit. And then I'm assuming you want us to stay, at least maintain, current levels of academic programming for our kids. Certainly, as opportunities present, and this would be with discussion with the board, we would look to exceed any current levels of programming, but I'm assuming as a starting point in a tax cap era that you want us to do everything possible to maintain current level of programming, meaning what we're currently offering our kids as part of programming in our school will not change into next school year. So, these are proposed and it's just to get the discussion going. We don't need to discuss this extensively tonight, but at the next meeting, we should probably look to solidify what the parameters are because we'll be at a point where the administration really needs to start working on the budget development. Okay?
Just a quick question, maybe it's to you, Ann. Has there ever been a time when we've been below the tax, the levy limit?
Not by any significant amount, no.
It's a good question and some districts purposely will remain below for a period of time. A district I had worked in for a period of time, we stayed below the limit for eight years. And over those eight years, though, it accumulated to $10 million less in money we could have levied from the community that we did not do. So, on one hand, that's a sign of maybe being fiscally responsible. From a program perspective, that's $10 million a program that, you know, we potentially could have run that we chose not to, so I think it's a really good question. That's why I'm going back to, do you want me to develop a budget to the limit?
Right.
Because I don't want to take for granted that, well, that's what we've always done here.
Yeah, be explicit about it.
No, thanks for asking. I think this is my last piece. I just want to give you a sense of what goes on behind the scenes and this is by no means exhaustive. So, in the coming months, I'll be working very closely with our administrative team to formulate a budget recommendation within the parameters that are established by the board. And this will mean working with each building principal to submit what we call a budget book, but essentially their proposed budget for each respective building program to me and to Ann to review. We will review all areas of our program. That includes looking at our class sizes through our program, looking at secondary, what we call section load reports, which is how our classes, electives, non-electives are filled across the scope of the secondary program. This would also include examining our special education program and the scope of services that we're providing through special education. And then the strategic planning roadmaps that we're developing or have developed, we'll review those and any professional learning needs that we feel are anticipated to help us meet our strategic objectives. This is just a short list into many things that we're examining over the next few months. And really, it's Ann and my responsibility to kind of monitor the temperature of the budget development process. We'll have continued discussions as we go along about respective areas of the program and I will be sharing with you what I think we can do, what I think, concerned we may not be able to do with the fiscal outlook for the 2019, '20 school year. So, as issues arise, it's really our responsibility to engage particular individuals or groups of individuals if we feel that they're going to be impacted by the budget development process. So, while there's a formal process that's going to be articulated on our budget calendar with Ann in a few minutes and that will occur at Board of Education meetings, there's an informal process that's going, well, I don't want to say informal, but there's a process that's going on behind the scenes depending on how the budget is shaping up. And I just want to be upfront about that before we get too far into it. I hope there are no issues. I hope we're in the situation where we have more money than we anticipated, but from a planning perspective, we operate under the mindset that we may indeed have less and have to make difficult decisions and we should be prepared for that. And really, when it comes time to make an administrative recommendation, it's the recommendation of the full administration. It's my responsibility to work with Ann and with our administrative team to make sure that all of our administrators are engaged in this and that we are presenting a budget to you that we feel best meets the parameters and our objectives for our work with kids and that there's a lot of work that goes into that. We won't agree at the start, but we'll make sure we're in agreement by the end and that's the short of it for me. And Ann's going to go through now a couple of key dates for you, just to give you an overview.
Just before you go on, can you go back to the parameters? Not the recommended ones, but the ones previously, just because I don't see what they continue. Do we have target for reserves? Because implication of to fund depleted reserves. So, is there a reserve target for each one of our reserves or?
We don't necessarily have targets that the board has established, but there are some guidelines as to, you know, you can't park money in a reserve forever.
Right.
It has a purpose.
Right.
And the past few years, our focus has primarily been on capital, whether it be the repair reserve or the reserve anticipating an upcoming referendum.
Yep.
There's, I'm really excited that there's a couple of new reserves that I always thought we should have had for years and they're being talked about finally. One of them is a special education reserve, which, you know, we would really benefit from that.
You mean like being established?
To establish a reserve, right, for us to be allowed to establish the reserve. It doesn't exist yet. We have an employees' retirement system reserve that we do take advantage of. There is some legislation now to have a teachers' retirement reserve, so those are two that are, you know, a long time coming. That, it depends on the needs of the school. They're for a purpose, but you should really always have some plan that you would have reserves in mind for.
And there is a cap, right, 4%? Is that the number?
The 4% is our unappropriated, unappropriated fund balance.
So, if I were coming in cold and looking at our reserve balances, would there be an easy way for me to tell whether they are depleted or full?
Well, I will tell you.
I was then asking you.
That, no, there's no rule of thumb. There's no calculation. There's no formula. Again, it's what have we used in the past? What do we anticipate we're going to use in the next few years and plan for that?
Okay.
So, but that might be interesting information, right, to get from you, Ann, to say, I would like, and the two of you, to say, you know, our ideal would be to have our repair reserve at X. Our ideal would be to have the EBLAR at X or, you know, whatever, so that when thinking about how do we want to fund our reserves, we actually know at least what your target targets are, right? Would that be something that would be helpful?
Right, that happens usually at the end of the year, right? So that, and at audit time, when we know if we have, you know, June 30th, we know if we have excess fund balance and before the taxes are set, you have to put that extra excess fund balance in a reserve or it has to reduce taxes. So, there are those rules that we have to follow.
Correct, but at some point, you would argue, you would say, okay, all of our reserves are at the point where we need them and we still have money left over, we should have a tax offset.
Certainly.
That would be the ideal.
Well, yeah, but, and so you would need to know going in that, okay, we do or don't need more money in capital repair or special ed or whatever it may be. Okay.
I think what would be helpful is to evaluate where our reserves, sorry, where the reserves are now and what they're earmarked for. I know that field down there, we initially earmarked for and those funds should still be available because that was one of the things that we said in 10 years and believe it or not, we're coming up pretty close to those 10 years. That's something that we need to think about. So, it might be helpful to just take a look at what we have earmarked to this point.
Certainly, and I think probably an appropriate time would be at the future board meeting where we talk about our estimated revenues because that's where if we're going to incorporate reserves into the revenue side of the budget, that's where that would come into play and we could certainly go into detail about the reserves we have and what we use them for, what appropriate uses for our reserves are. We always want to keep in mind that reserves are non-recurring revenue sources, so we don't want to use them for operating expenses because then next year, we have a hole in the budget.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Sure. So, the next board meeting, December 4th, we will be asking the board to adopt the budget calendar, which is in board docs in the same area that this presentation is. It's the proposed budget calendar. We will also be talking about establishing the budget parameters that Superintendent just described and possibly more, and presenting the rollover budget. The rollover budget answers the question, based on the contractual obligations and other known increases, what will it cost to operate the district next year with the current staff and program offerings? current staff and program offerings? It's always a starting point. And then from there, we talk about what we may not need anymore and what we may want to add, any enhancements, compare that with the revenue, and then we move forward with our budget development.
Is the fundamental change in rollover budget salaries and benefits, an all-programmatic by?
That does, salary and benefits makes up 76% of our budget, so.
But between this year's budget and the rollover budget that you're presenting, that any delta will be driven by changes in salaries and benefits?
Yes.
And not by, we're going to buy 10,000 more books, because that would be a programmatic change?
That would be a change, right. It's what it will cost next year based on those contractual obligations, whether it be health insurance rates, what are the projections for that, what are labor contracts, what are the increases?
Yep.
Even the BOSI's budget, that's known to us for next year. What are those, what are those programs going to cost next year? Whether or not we keep the same ones, that's the development question.
Right, okay. And this is just cost side, or is this revenue side as well?
This is cost side.
Okay.
So this is the actual budget calendar, okay? There are a lot of items that are on here that the board doesn't have to be concerned about. A lot of them, Julia here, sitting next to me, has to be concerned with them. There's filing requirements, there's legal notices, there's the receiving petitions for board candidates, voter registration. All of these things have certain due dates that are mandated by the state. That you, they're one of those behind the scenes, a lot of those behind the scenes items that the superintendent was talking about. There are other things that go on, the newsletter prep. There's a lot that happens during budget season, but what we bring to the board are those program changes, those enhancements, those things that will drive the budget change. So we're not going to go line by line on this calendar. We're going to go over some key dates that will happen at regular board meetings and a couple of workshops. So in January, on January 8th, we'll discuss all the support segments of the budget. We're going to talk about administration. Those are the costs of salaries and benefits of the administrators, their clerical staff. We're going to talk about business office functions, such as payroll, accounts payable, the tax collection. We're going to present costs for operations and maintenance, for transportation, for debt service. These are all what fall under what's called the administrative component and the capital components of the budget. Anything else is a program component, and that gets a, you know, that's dedicated. We'll have a dedicated meeting for that later. This is also the meeting where we're going to introduce any additional propositions that might want to offer, such as a vehicle or a bus prop, which we always have one. Everybody asks, why do we always have to buy a bus? It's because the buses age out, and we have a replacement plan for them. We couldn't afford to replace all our buses at the same time, so one or two a year, using a bond anticipation note, makes the budget manageable. We don't see spikes in that area of the budget. This is also where we'd be discussing a potential capital referendum, because that would also be a separate proposition in addition to the budget prop.
So the propositions and the details behind them would be formally presented on the 8th?
And discussed, to see, you know, if it's something.
Public, open for public discussion?
For board discussion.
Board discussion?
Right, the need for things, and if you want to include a proposition on the ballot.
Is that, is that the meeting at which we make the decision to include it on the ballot, or no? When it's presented, how's that work?
You're going to discuss whether or not it's going to be a feasible proposition. You're not approving the proposition yet, though.
Okay.
That's at a future.
Got it.
That's down the line. It's a discussion, correct.
Got it.
So I just, I want to go back to, throughout these months of January, February, and early March, we're going to present certain components of the budget and how we anticipate them shaping up ultimately as part of the full administrative recommendation. And that's an opportunity for us to get feedback from you, and if community members want to comment during public comment, to hear how it's resonating with you, and to really get a sense if we need to go back and make any modifications. For you ultimately, we want to be at a point where the administrative recommendation, when it's finalized in March, I believe, we'll get to that, that it's pretty clear that you've already heard each component part of that, and you feel like you're in a good, we feel like we're in a good position to have the board's support on it, and you feel like it's been transparent, and you're in a good position to adopt it at a subsequent meeting. So nobody, no decisions have to be made in January, but we really want you to look at it, obviously, through a critical lens, because if we need to go back, it takes a lot of time to go back to something like that and to reevaluate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. This is, it's really good that we're doing this this year. We have never done a presentation like this before, where we look ahead and we're showing the whole plan. Plus, the budget calendar has changed this year. You know, honestly, we don't present, we have not presented the rollover budget before January in the past, and that's changed now, and it's a good thing we're going to be able to get deeper into it and take a closer look at this. So it's good, you know, that's why I had to look and say, oh, when are we presenting that budget? Because things have changed, things have changed from the past. So in February, so around the end of January, we look for the governor's executive proposal, which is the projected state aid for the following year. So the end of January, we get a proposal from the governor, what we're going, what we can expect in 1920. It's not the final state budget, but it, we can use it for planning purposes. So by this time, also, all of the information is in to allow us to compute our tax levy limit, which is also referred to as the tax cap. Our tax revenue accounts for the largest portion of our revenue in our budget. It's followed by state aid. State aid makes up about 10% of our budget, and tuition revenue. All of the other revenues that we get are really smaller, minor revenues, but those three components make up the most. The tax revenue far, you know, is far out in the lead as to the largest revenue. And this is the part, the budget presentation is the program part for curriculum and instruction, and that's quite an extensive presentation, so that's the only part of it that's here in February.
So if I may, Ann, I'm sorry. That's where we'll get into class sizes, projected class sizes for the following school year. We'll have our delta that we're working with at that time, pretty ideally firm. So we'll know, as Ann mentioned, 74% or 76% of our budget is salaries and benefits. So usually, if you're working with a significant delta, you are looking at, and you have to resolve it, you have to look at an area of program, often. Not saying that's fait accompli, you know, in this budget, but it more often than not is an area you have to look. So it's important to present this component early on, so we know, because I think it's the one area that may directly impact students the most significantly. So if we need to sit with it, we give ourselves some time to sit with it, but at the same time, it's all on the up and up, and if anybody's also, in fairness, in full candor, if we are at a point where we have to make reductions, we want to give our staff members who may be impacted by that due notice, so that they can make whatever decisions they need to make for themselves professionally. So usually, February's an interesting month when it comes to budget development, because some things start to really take shape. And again, we just want to make sure we're really transparent about why we present curriculum and instructional program at that time or sooner, but no later.
Looking ahead to March, March, at the March meeting, we discuss special education. And at this point, we have a pretty clear idea of what our plan is shaping up to be for 1920. So recommended spending plan can be presented based on our revenue that's expected. So for several months now, we've been developing a budget. It needs to stay within boundaries that we don't know yet. That's what makes school budgeting very challenging, is that by this time, in our budget development, we should have a spending plan, only we don't know really how much money we're getting until April, so.
And just one comment on this. The special education component is really important. It's also a good opportunity to talk about the scope of program services that we provide, but it's a bit speculative in March, because our annual review process is typically not complete. So we'll be budgeting around some anticipation of programming, but through the CSE process, March, April, May, there could be program placements that are being recommended for children that could influence our budget development. So we try to account for that, but it's an imperfect science at that point, but again, it's.
Special ed is a subsection of the program component, right? So year on year, as things change and you get new students or new students with needs, what's the potential, what's the potential year-over-year change in the special education component?
It's a really good question. I think we'll probably show that to you at this point, to give you a sense for it. I think it varies by district. My sense is, and so I'm just making assumptions now, yeah. Being a smaller district will probably experience some more variability than a larger district would, because one unique student need, you know, because we're talking about a relatively small N size here overall, could significantly shift the scope, the cost of program that we're offering, which would show up here, so.
Yeah.
But that's something we should be presenting to you.
That's why that special ed reserve is very exciting for someone, a district of our size, because, you know, we could be dipping into our 4%.
Roughly-ish. How big is a special ed budget?
It's over $1 million.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Right.
So March 19th, we've designated that for the pre-budget hearing. So if there's still issues that are unsettled, it's the time to discuss that and firm things up, so that a budget proposal can be finalized. At this time, John, this is, I believe, what you were referring to before, maybe this is where you adopt the resolution to call for the annual meetings and vote on the propositions that we discussed earlier in the budget development, whether there's a capital referendum or a bus proposition, and also to adopt the resolution for the election of the board April 2nd is a review of the estimated revenues. The state budget is due April 1st. They're not always on time.
Did it go?
No.
[laughing].
They've been, they've been pretty good lately, but, you know, then we get an extra $5,000, so it's.
Or 80 bucks.
80 bucks.
Really?
So we'll.
It was like it was a big drum roll, too. Like, you're all really excited.
Oh, but didn't we, didn't we come into like some $1,000 because the math was wrong this year? Weren't they allocating money to charter?
It was a federal grant, I believe, Title II. We got, I think it was.
It was like $16,000.
I don't think it was that much. I was going to say, it was like $1,600 maybe, but, yeah. I think that may be what you're recalling, early in the summer.
So at this meeting, we're going to review the final state aid, the maximum tax levy projection, and our tuition revenue, whether that's going to rise or fall, because that's our third-largest revenue source. It's also at this point whether we determine whether or not we can move forward with the recommended budget, or if anything needs to be trimmed or added. I'm not going to be negative about our state aid that we might get. I always hold out, I'm always the last holdout for more state aid. April 23rd is a mandatory meeting date for the BOSI's vote, budget vote, and their board member election. It's at this meeting that the board will look to adopt the 1920 budget for Haldane and approve the budget proposition and the property tax report card, which needs to be filed with the Controller's Office the next day. Now, it's really just getting into, you know, now that all of the discussions and the projections are done, now it's business. It's, we're following, we're following dates that we have to be in compliance with. May 7th, the complete budget document is presented to the public in a three-component format, the administrative, the capital, and the program. This document is, includes descriptions of the revenues and the expenses, our current budget figures, we give projected amounts for the current year, and also the last available school report card. And there's other various disclosure statements that are included in the final budget document. And here we are on May 21st with our annual meeting, the budget's being voted on, any props are being voted on, and the trustee election.
My favorite day to have.
It's her favorite day.
She's locked in here, all day. You're locked in all day.
Yep.
Thank you, Ann.
Okay.
Yeah. We're good.
I just wanted to add one thing that Dr. Benante and I discussed on Friday. There may be other opportunities as well, where Dr. Benante will host some budget forums. I think that was helpful, and I anticipate that would be helpful again this year.
Yeah, so we haven't fully articulated a communication plan or strategy, what, but we're in the process of developing one. What Ann presented this evening, again, are the more formal elements of how the budget by law must be communicated, and what must occur at board meetings at various points through the process. But I alluded to, it's important for us to meet people where they are. So we don't want to rely, while it's wonderful that a handful of people came out to our board meeting this evening, you know, we may have better luck, or I may have better luck, going to a PTA meeting and presenting an overview of the budget there, going to Lions Club meeting and presenting an overview of the budget there, going to someone's living room and presenting the budget there. But it's important for our community to be well-informed, and I just don't think we can bank on the community in order to do so coming at our public meeting. They may, but it may not be conducive to their schedule. So throughout the next month or so, we'll sit down and confirm dates with various stakeholder groups in the area where I'll go out, or Ann will go out, and board members will certainly be invited to attend if you want to come and listen, because it'll likely be dates before you've actually adopted the budget. So you can hear the feedback that's being provided all along, although I'll be providing it to you as well. And I think that's, you know, an important part of this, is what's going on, again, behind the scenes, to make sure that our community is well-informed.
Great, great.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Fantastic. Actually, two questions. What's the, year on year, other than programmatic changes, what are the biggest cost changes that you see that you have to accommodate for? So in other words, things that you're like, oh crap, we've got to find another $200,000 for this. What's the this?
TRS.
It's more revenue stream.
So revenue vary, revenue varies more than costs do?
Yeah, it's the, the biggest. Yeah, it's the, the biggest drivers of that delta that you're talking about has been the TRS, Teachers Retirement System. Employees Retirement System, the past few years have been relatively flat.
Which are pushed down, which are percentages pushed down from?
From the state.
From the state.
Right, from the retirement system. They tell you what the rate is, and we pay them based on the salary. There's no negotiating there. It's, it is what it is. And our health insurance rates. You know, the consortium, I think, has really paid close attention to what districts in the consortium need, because they're sensitive to the tax cap, they know that we have to be within it. They've been using their fund balance to keep the cost low and to be competitive. But you, you're not going to see less than 3%. And, you know, if, it's not a true 2% tax cap, but if it's around that area, and that's what people expect, we already have health insurance rates going up 3%.
Right.
And that I already know. We already know those rates for next year. The labor contracts are set.
Right, you know what those are.
But they're, and they're going up. The, what helps too is it's called breakage. If someone retires, we're going to replace them at a lower step. That helps balance some of that differential. Don't be shocked when the rollover budget is, you know, a double-digit percent increase.
Because you haven't backed in.
We haven't, we haven't put in any breakage yet.
Yeah, okay.
And that usually what helps narrow that gap in that rollover budget.
Okay. Cool. One more question. Previously, we had, in a different meeting, you had talked about debt rolling off the books, and that creating capacity to be able to do other things is, when does that, what are the tranches of debt that are going to start to retire that you can then leverage for other things?
Do you want to go B&amp;G Thunder?
Yeah, so we'll present that.
Oh, all right, never mind, all right.
Give us one more meeting.
I'll back off. Sorry, that's good.
But no, we'll be able to illustrate that for you. But essentially, it's projects that we have assumed debt for in the past that are coming towards a phase where we will either have paid them off, or the debt schedule changes significantly, where we feel we can take more debt on and not assume, and not ultimately impact the overall budget.
Got it.
Because we're already working with a certain number.
Yeah.
So we plan to demonstrate, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
We would demonstrate to you what the debt schedule is, and you'll be able to see visually, and it's much easier if we have a visual representation of it, how the debt service schedule is changing over the next five years. And we could use that as an opportunity to get some work done.
Capital.
Yes, that needs to be done.
Cool, thank you.
Okay. Moving on.
The committee minutes from the wellness meeting held on October 29th, as well as the technology meeting held on November 5th are there for viewing? Are there questions?
I was going to say that in reading both of those committee minutes, I was pleasantly, I was, I really liked that they, both committees seemed to be re-looking at their mission and their charge, and what's their purpose, and why, how are they going to get that purpose done? And it just seemed nice and organizational and refocused and fresh. Yes, and that was great.
Thanks.
Okay, information reports, we'll start with you, Andrew.
All right, so normally, I talk about the peer mentoring program and what we're doing at this point, but our last four meetings unfortunately have been delayed or canceled or snowed out, and so I have nothing to report there. So moving on, we would like to thank the high school guidance department for organizing College Week, where 15 students were accepted as part of instant decision days, another nine students applied before that with early binding, and another 39 students applied with early action applications. Additionally, students were awarded close to $40,000 in scholarships, and staff members wore their college sweatshirts one day to discuss colleges with students and to let them know where they went in case students were interested. We would like to thank the faculty for writing all the letters of recommendations, specifically Ms. Moscow for writing a recommendation for every single student. I'd like to thank Ms. Sniffen for helping me find all this information. And, yeah, with that, I have to go back to rehearsal. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night, happy Thanksgiving.
Good luck.
Happy Thanksgiving, Andrew.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Mr. Wallach.
Good evening, everybody, and I just want to echo what Dr. Benante said earlier with wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and obviously, there's a lot to be thankful for this year and every year. I want to share a little bit about our elementary student council elections, which took place a couple of weeks ago. I know that's briefly mentioned in my report. We really try to have a representative democracy that echoes our national system, but only looking at the best points of our national system these days. And, you know, grades three, four, and five participate. Every class has a representative. They had to get signatures on petitions in order to be able to run. They had speeches in their own classes, and then they each, each class picked their representative. For our president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer, that is, those are school-wide positions for grades three, four, and five. And again, the students needed to get signatures on petitions. They were able to put up advertising posters. If you were here a few days before the election, they were covering the halls all over the place. One thing nice compared to the real elections outside is we take all our posters down the very next day. After the election, they were all totally gone. The Friday before the election, we had an assembly for students in grades three, four, and five. Dr. Benante joined us in the audience, and the students made their speeches. And some students, very passionate about the things that they believe in, some put together with their parents' help, no doubt, some put together with their friends' help, some put together with their teachers' help, and they shared why they felt they should be elected to these various positions. The students were called up one at a time. You know, for some of our students, as young as third grade, it's quite an experience to be speaking basically before half of the school. All the students did a great job, and then our election was held on November 6th, again, echoing what happens in our society. And we had the election, the results, there was, there was no question, there was no states that were waiting weeks and weeks for a result, and the results were announced just before dismissal on Election Day. Mrs. Kristin Spooner is our advisor for our student council program here in elementary school, and she does a great job with the kids. They held their first meeting the very next day after the election, and they're already working on some projects that they're going to be going forward with throughout the year. So I just want to share, it's a great experience for our grades three, four, and five students, something for our younger students to look forward to when they finally hit third grade. But, you know, it was, it was just wonderful, and I just wanted to share that with you this evening. So thank you.
And Mr. Wallach, at least my son's third grade class, I believe 30% of the students ran for.
Yes.
And off, to be a representative. And I just think, I mean, that's so reflective of our community. We have a very civic-minded community, and I think that is so fantastic. And obviously, they're not just getting that civic energy at home, they're also being really supported at school to all raise their hands and run, and that's pretty amazing.
Many, many, many students wanted to participate. Obviously, there's only so many people that can be elected. That's a learning experience in and of itself. There were clearly students that were heartbroken that they weren't the person elected, you know, but, but that is also something that we have to deal with and work with our children and help them understand that experience as well. So thank you for your question.
Great, thank you. Dr. Silke.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to highlight the eighth grade this evening. Our eighth grade team was the last team scheduled in our rollout of the strategic plan to receive coaching on project-based learning and deeper learning experiences, and that happened last spring. And when they received that coaching last spring, their coach asked them, as they began their endeavor to collaborate, if they wanted to work on projects subject by subject, or if they wanted to do, jump into an interdisciplinary project. And to their credit, and with a growth mindset, they said, let's do an interdisciplinary project. So the eighth grade team has been working on an interdisciplinary project since last spring that rolled out in late October and that they're working on now. And the project centers around the enduring theme in social studies of immigration. So what's, a snippet of what's occurring in each of the classes. In Mr. McComville's social studies class, the students first did an exploration of their own cultural heritage, and now they're doing some research and preparing slideshows to do presentations on different topics in immigration. In Mr. Dougherty's ELA class, the students are doing a letter-writing campaign on issues regarding immigration. In science, the students graph the trends in immigration over a timeline in history, and in math, they use that data to make calculations. It's really impressive, it's a really impressive first go at, you know, an interdisciplinary, deeper learning project for the eighth grade, and I'm very grateful and excited about it. Tomorrow, the students are, as a whole class, so as a whole grade, so all 82 students, are going to be doing station work surrounding immigration. So their stations include hearing a guest speaker discuss their own personal story of becoming a United States citizen, having a feast with foods that, that, that share the cultural heritage through food. And also, the students are going to be making cloth segments to represent their cultural heritage that will then be put together as a mosaic to be displayed. So I'm very excited about this work, and I just wanted to take an extra minute to share some of those details with you.
Dr. Silke, I just had a question. In your report, you mentioned the prevention needs assessment, and I was just wondering if you could remind me, or maybe Mr. Solomon could. This is something we do every two years, right?
Actually, we did it last year as well, but we didn't do, you know, we didn't do the national one, we did the regional one, but it's still prevention needs assessment.
So we do it every year. Oh, maybe I'm thinking it's eighth grade, then 10th grade, then 12th grade. Is that the two-year gap that's in my head? Is that correct?
I'm not sure if that's a two-year gap that's in your head. I just.
But it's not.
You don't want it in your head, but it's in your head.
I, I know that, that, you know, in my previous, in previous districts, it was always done every year, and it was done last year, a different survey was done for prevention needs assessment last year, and it was done again this year, the national one. I don't know if, yeah, I don't know if Mr. Solomon could jump in, but.
Different groups.
Yeah, so, so.
There's a two-year gap between the ages, right? So it's eighth grade, 10th grade, 12th grade, but we do it every year. No.
Yeah, so.
With every other year.
But the way this fell with regional, national, it's.
Right, it just has to be back-to-back years.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
So you're.
So the national is every other year. The national is every other year.
So they're funded by grants, right? So Putnam County received the grant, so the last year's data was for a specific grant, right? So they have to continue to show their growth and their work and, you know, present their needs. The one that we just did was the federal, which is the big one, which is eighth through, 12th or 11th? 12th, eighth through 12th, which we do every other year. We have been doing every other year since 2005.
Thank you, that's the one I'm, I'm thinking of.
That's the big one.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it might as well, go ahead.
I was just going to ask a question about an acronym. What's ASSD?
After-school Staff Development.
Got it.
So it's a contractual obligation that teachers, 10 hours a year, they do above the regular workday.
Got it. So it's mandatory because you, do you need to do mandatory? That's you. She's like.
We're interchangeable at this point.
Got it, okay.
So I think you're referring to the Ruler Training.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So ASSD is, is, could be free, it could be free choice.
Yep.
And then there's a certain amount of hours that an administrator could require.
Got it.
So in order to ensure that all of the middle school faculty has universal language based on Ruler, I mandated that the faculty attend a one-hour ASSD on Ruler, intro to Ruler.
Cool, great. I just noticed that it came up in one of the, in the Wellness Committee report. I'd never heard of Ruler before, where it's being assessed, expanded, adopted?
Ruler would fall under, so at the end of the school year, we're going to provide an overview of the work that's being done on social-emotional learning.
Yeah.
And Ruler is one component program of that. We have several here.
So we get back to the curriculum.
So we need to sit with that, yep, and talk about what are our long-term goals under social, under the umbrella of social-emotional learning? How does Ruler fit within those goals?
Got it.
In addition to the other programs that we're utilizing? Where do we want to expand if applicable? And where do we want to contract if applicable?
Got it, great.
So it's one part of that.
Okay, cool.
But essentially, it's a, it's a tool for students, well, you can speak to it better than I could.
Yeah, it's my understanding that Ruler, Ruler preceded me in this district, and I, I'm going to look to Julie again. What, what year did Ruler come?
Tony's first, first year, so.
Three years ago. So three years ago, it's my understanding that, that Dr. Shoah, the PPS director at that time, brought the concept of Ruler as a K-12 attempt? Is that my, I don't want to misspeak. So a K-12 attempt to roll out Ruler as a universal language for faculty to speak with one another and with their students about feelings. So the work comes from Mark Brackett's work in Yale, at Yale, and, you know, the, the, the concept is, as Dr. Benante said, a social-emotional learning concept that can be embedded in every classroom.
Got it, okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Ms. Sniffen? Actually, just to add, there was, I remember, in a couple of board reports last year, we did have a group of faculty or staff attend Ruler Training at Yale.
Oh, cool.
So I think it's something that they've been exploring, but you can all speak to it more than I can.
A lot of the work too was done with Sarah Graham and the coaching within the fourth, seventh, and ninth grade. So a lot of that work happened there with Lerner Profile work as part of that.
Okay.
All right. So at the high school, I'm just going to take the time to talk, November 13th is the superintendent, November 13th. November 30th is Superintendent's Conference Day. And at the secondary level, both middle school and high school, our teachers will be working together by department to take a look at some of the changing standards, the curriculum, some of the holes and the gaps, and alignment between different grade levels. So we're very excited, we have about three hours on that day dedicated to that work. We met today, Mary Ann and myself, with the department chairs to start planning exactly how we want to have that day work. So we're excited about that. I'd also like to, at this time, it's a, it's an interesting time of year, we have two teachers coming back from leave, and I would like to thank Tom DeBruel, who, three of his students just left, I was hoping they would still be here in their civic-mindedness, teaches government for us. And Melissa Seidman will be coming back on December 7th. And I'd also like to thank Matt Glassoff, who has been teaching Algebra I and Algebra II for us from the beginning of the school year, as Kristin Paparo will be coming back December 10th. So we're very excited, and today was Ida's first day, who, Ida is the French leave for Amy Hopkins. So I'd like to thank all of them. And again, just a shout-out for the play, December 7th and 8th. I hope everybody can come one of the two nights. The students have been working incredibly hard with Martha McElachus and Andrea McHugh. So 7 o'clock, just on Friday and Saturday night.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a quick recap of our fall season. We just finished yesterday, so we went about three weeks longer than every other school in Section 1, so it's a tremendous accomplishment for all our kids, though, so I just wanted to highlight everyone from the fall season. Dr. Benante already mentioned, but our varsity football team unfortunately came up short yesterday, but they had a tremendous season, losing in the New York State Class D semifinal, so congratulations to Coach McComville and all his players. I'd also like to congratulate our varsity girls' soccer team. Last weekend, we were up in Cortland, the girls played hard, but unfortunately, lost in the New York State semifinal as well. But just getting to that point is a tremendous accomplishment, so we're proud of all our girls. I'd also like to congratulate our varsity cross-country team. Our boys made it to the New York State Tournament, and Adam, excuse me, Adam Salhavi placed 10th out of about 100 runners in Class D, so he medaled. And then for our girls, we didn't have enough for a team, but a couple of girls competed as individuals, and actually Shannon Ferry medaled and came in 20. as individuals, and actually Shannon Ferry medaled and came in 20th out of another 100 runners about. So congratulations to Adam and Shannon as well. And I'd also like to congratulate our volleyball team. They lost in the sectional championship, but they had a tremendous season. So overall, real positive fall season for our student athletes. We're working on scholar athletes right now, but I believe every team is going to be a scholar athlete team, with the exception maybe one. So another outstanding accomplishment for our athletic program and for all our student athletes. So thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. I'd like to just update you a little bit on some of the HVAC problems we've had. We tackled an issue we had in the elementary school in that we didn't have control of our climate. So we.
[laughing]
And that was the lingering problem. It was the elementary school, and, you know, we had it in our capital plan to install digital controls. So what we did was we were able to restore the pneumatic system that we have in place by replacing the thermostats. We replaced 18 thermostats. We got some good technical expertise from outside, and our in-house staff was able to follow along, and they'll be able to maintain it. And so moving on to staffing, we interviewed a number of staff. I interviewed some existing staff for promotional positions, as well as some outside applicants for bus driver positions and bus mechanic positions. So we had some good interest from the outside, and some recommendations were made that you'll be reviewing tonight. And we expect to continue, you know, interviewing applicants and hiring some good folks. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Nabeel. I know you mentioned the elementary classrooms, but you were also working on a matter in the auditorium as well. Is that correct?
Right, yeah. So we had a lot of dysfunctional thermostats. Thermostats control an actuator in a valve, and pneumatic systems use air compressor, and they actually use the air that's pumped into the lines, where the lines are deteriorate, then we lose control. They also need to be calibrated every couple of years. So we don't really have that capacity in-house, but at one time, it existed, and so the folks that we have are going to be able to take that on. So maintaining a pneumatic system, you know, takes some work, and we'll be able to do that. In the auditorium, we just had some dysfunctional thermostats. So those were replaced.
Great.
Thank you. Okay. Our public has dwindled. I think you opened the door and scared everybody a little.
We're going to add the temperature control in this room to the.
Temperature. Yeah.
Thermostats.
Any communication from the public? Okay. Moving on to consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
I have a question on establishing scholarship awards. Is there like a minimum amount that we require for award establishment?
No.
Okay.
We do not. We had a, we used to, it was very popular to have, it was called a non-expendable trust fund. That's when interest rates were high, and someone could give us a lump of money.
Yeah.
And the interest that was earned from that lump of money was the award.
Right.
That doesn't happen anymore at a quarter of a percent, so it's an expendable trust fund.
Unless it's a very big.
Very, very large.
Amount of money.
And we don't have that deposit, with those deposits. So now, what usually happens is every year, there might be some fundraising by the family, perhaps, and money will come in at graduation time, and the award is reviewed from the committee, and a student is chosen, and we will in turn write the check.
Any additional questions or comments?
I just noticed that the Lakeland contract seemed to be for Yorktown. Or that, the, for the special services, that at least the one online, the signatory line was for, which I assume is just a cut-and-paste issue, but.
Would be so respectfully, what you would act on tonight, I guess we would, it would be for an updated contract with that error corrected.
I assume the numbers are right.
The contract that's in here is Lakeland. Oh, but at the bottom.
I look at the bottom.
The bottom. Okay. Just here, it says.
Yep.
Yorktown.
You see that?
Oh, I do. Yeah, this.
This probably went to that district as well.
From Lakeland.
It came from Lakeland. They probably had one to send to Yorktown as well.
They've got a lot. They're just like sending them out.
They have a lot. Send them out.
So we would make that correction, though.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Obviously.
Ray, we would just cross it out and change it.
Thank you.
Phew, it wasn't us.
Catching. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Number eight, the clerk typist, that's for Nabeel.
Yes.
That's for you. The clerk typist position is going to be.
It is. It's consistent with the reorganization plan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Unfinished business.
If I may, I, the board retreat, just to note, I know it's listed as eight to 12 here, but there were some preferences in moving that towards the evening. So I have Ms. Dearborn looking into that with BOSI's, and then she'll confirm with all of you the time. So it's here as a placeholder, because that's what we have for BOSI's right now, but within the next few days, I'll give a till after the Thanksgiving break, we may be able to shift that just to accommodate some preferences among board members. But if I understand correctly, the first was good for everybody.
Yeah. The date is fine.
The date is fine. Just preference to move the time a little later.
Shifting to like five to nine?
Yeah.
Or six to nine? What do we, five to nine?
We're trying to leave four hours.
Yeah. For me, it'd be preferable so I can work on Friday.
Sure. Got it. So as long as this five to nine works, that's what we'll confirm with. We'll work with BOSI's on that. Great.
The next item is the approval for the CSE/CPSE recommendations. The recommended action is, be it resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next item is the approval of the resolution authorization for the use of funds from the Repair Reserve for the water damage remediation project. The recommended action is, be it resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the following resolution. Resolved, that the Board of Education authorizes the expenditure of a sum not to exceed $30,000 from the Repair Reserve Fund for the water damage remediation project.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? We're good. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lastly, the policy regarding workplace sexual harassment and sexual harassment policy for students has been placed here as a first reading. We will be reviewing it, and any questions, comments, discussions can be had, and we'll approve hopefully at next meeting, December 4th. So this is the kind of policy that really is state-mandated. A lot of it, there's some discussion, but most of it is state-mandated. And as I understand, Jen and Peggy and Dr. Benanti have already met as the subcommittee on policy and have begun to discuss this and have gotten it to this place with the help of our attorneys.
Correct.
Yeah. So this is already a second draft, basically.
Right. That's what I was getting at. But again, state mandates most of this, so. So we'll review it. Any questions, we'll bring up to Dr. Benanti, and we'll get it going for next meeting. Okay. Any communication? Our public is really dwindled. Any further communication? Okay. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.